Call the Water and River Bridge City Council, Red River Council meeting. For October seventh, twenty twenty five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Matt or Mayor Luke Dillon. Robert Cheney.
Here.
Jamie McElmurray. Kathy Rag. Diana Larson. Rick Hill.
Alright, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, first off, we have public presentation. Randy Camp, South County Athletic Sports.
We don't see him. Basically, he was just gonna come in, I think, talk about they raised all that field up, got all the sprinklers up, seeded, reseeded that baseball field and it's really nice. It would be really nice.
Right. That's good. Anything else that they're redoing or they?
They're redoing the baseball field at Millsite Park.
I think they're just waiting for the grass to grow now.
Okay.
And then they gotta start cutting their lines in and getting their bases set. And they're gonna put two sets of bases. He's like ninety, so multi multiplayer and then they're gonna bring in. Gonna buy a portable. So.
That's really nice. Is that the same gentleman that came several months ago and passed out? Alright, citizens heard on non agenda items. Uh, got one, Kenneth Stone. You come up and I pay your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Uh, my name is Kenneth Stone. I live at five forty-five Northeast Way Street in River Creek. Um. I've been trying to resolve an issue with involving police misconduct since July. I filed a complaint with the police department, they ignored it. This is a petition, a constitutional writ that the city was served yesterday by the Sheriff's Department, I believe. Um. And I'm just trying to get it resolved. Officer Smith tried to force his way in my home. For no reason. Um, when I did not allow that and got the door closed on him, he proceeded to witness somebody threatening my life, kicking my front door. I put the couch in front of my front door and then kicked in my back door, at which point he decided he should leave the scene. And wait around the corner for me to leave and arrest him. I have the entire incident on video. He threatened to arrest me several times for no reason. And then when I wouldn't let him in my house, he arrested me and said it was for disorderly conduct for yelling. I have the entire incident on video. I was assaulted. I called the police. They responded. The person admitted to assaulting me. Threatening my life, said if you don't get me out of here, I'm gonna kill him or myself, the two police officers. And then proceeded to break him. And he did not do this job. And I'm trying to get the body cameras and they will not give it to me. They had my neighbor's CCTV footage and now it's missing. They didn't save it. The only, there's a too many clip out of a six hour call. He arrived at my house at seven fifty-two AM and the clip starts at like twelve twenty. And it just shows me leaving my house and then he arrested me around the corner and this needs looking. And the police department is not going through it. I've talked to Bruce there. I've sent the videos to now. And I believe you guys have the authority of investigation.
Uh, we do not.
Right now, we're just going to have some police issue.
If it's a police issue, yeah, you can go to a lawyer and go.
I'm in that process.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, we don't have the capability.
But you can allocate them thousands of dollars.
Well, we, yeah, we.
So you control their funding, but you have no authority over.
You don't hire and fire or.
But you can order the note investigation.
No, we can't. Can't order them. That's not our, that's not our privilege for you.
It's the city administrator is basically all of the police department, right?
But he didn't have certain authority.
On your angle?
Well, he's gone, so we don't have city administrator right now. And that police didn't have a warrant against him?
No. And and he was mint from the question was, and he told him that she'd not run in to man up.
And that I needed a letter in my house or he was gonna arrest me. And I said, I'm not doing that. She's being violent. She admitted to it. I'm not doing this anymore. And I tried to close my door and he tried to push his way.
That's.
And then when I stopped him.
That's a police issue.
You're dealing with, you're dealing with nothing. Police on this issue and if it goes any further than that between lawyers and then maybe that, but right now it's a police issue.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
I'm just trying to get.
Yeah, we're not saying that what you, what you're bringing to us isn't legit. We just telling, we just don't have any jurisdiction right here.
Okay.
It says a lawyer like, oh, we don't have that.
Well, who do you call on the police?
What's that?
Who do you call on the police?
This is, you said.
Cause I called his supervisor and he wouldn't even look at the video.
It's.
So I mean, you can hire and fire the police supervisor if somebody does.
Well, first of all, I'm not believing that they're not taking this seriously.
They have not even looked at the video.
I'm not arguing that, but right now it's a police.
And it's October, so I mean, it's only been four months. And I filed three motions in court here. This is the fourth, it's in thirty-four now. So you're just making me raise a stand.
And next, consent agenda. We have one, five thousand one approval minutes of the Red River City Council meeting to push September fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion to clear.
Uh, any discussion, fire, vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote nay? Um, here it is. Uh, Red River agenda. Uh, six point one, MOU Learning Garden. Oh, yeah, who's that? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Uh, Shane Kelly. Two points up Park Street. Um, we discussed the MOU for the Learning Garden. Um, I had made some revisions. I know there were some questions. I went back through and watched the council video, um, and then made those revisions. It's a thing to look for, thank, uh, for some of those, uh, like the mistakes. So I expanded the details on that. So you guys have a copy of that.
Yeah. Look better than you.
I also, I put a map there to show the borderlines, common areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's looking for the map to us and sort of. You guys, I thought it was gonna go back over to April. So it's actually smaller than I assumed.
Yeah, there's that, there's a sidewalk burning cord that just dead ends and we could wanna just make that in order so that I can be extended.
Any other one of the working discuss?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to be accepted, uh. Both of them, the, and the local community.
Question?
I think the change is that I looked at, uh, first one and then second one. I think they're separate.
Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote nay? Alright, here it is. Alright, what word is that, September? Thank you. Yeah, thank you, yeah. Uh, six point two, review of draft owners, eight seven seven vehicles and traffic.
So this draft here removed the street designations for the central business district and just left it as referencing the official zoning map. So it would be accessible and regardless however the central business district, district were to change in the future, the map would reflect it and we wouldn't have to update streets. And we also addressed bicycles. And at first we were going to just add bicycles into the list of skateboard, scooter, da da da. But we have no skateboarding in the central business district and we didn't want no bicycles because that's a lot of people's transportation. Take a breath. So we put a whole section in for bicycles and it specifies no bicycles on the sidewalk in the central business district. Um, those were the only changes there. Um, so this copy is marked draft. If the draft is acceptable, we can go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in November. And after that first read, if there was a change you wanted prior to the second read, it can be made. Um, and then second read would be to adopt it into code. If there was any questions on any.
I have one, um. Is Millsite Park, uh, all around Millsite Park, is that?
It is not central business district.
Um, I was, I just had an experience recently, um, I, it was observed that I wasn't fully directly involved with it, that, um, there was like a ten year old. And he came zipping by, um, and he went all the way around the park. He, I felt, my thought was he's either gonna kill himself or he's gonna kill somebody else. That's how fast it was going. So I don't know if there's any way to.
I'm gonna say there's no way you can put code for speed of a kid riding a bike.
It was on a bike.
He was on an electric.
Oh, an electric one?
So I mean, it, the accident didn't happen this time, but there's gonna be an accident and, um, either some child or some dog or, or you know, even himself taking a corner too quickly.
Or is there anything in place? I'm not sure if it asks us to, but well, parks, public parks, you know, you're not allowed to use electric or motorized. I'm not sure if electric would fall into the motorized, I mean, you can think about more than eight motorized, you know, presentation or not.
I don't know what our sign says. It says something about horses and.
The signs in town, there's no skateboards or bicycles on the sidewalk, but I thought that just been flying around the top area of the park, not actually walking back.
This was on the street. It was going down the street, but then he took and he went back where the RV, you know, comes around this way. He was on the street.
He was on Ford, went down Ford.
Yeah, and then took down and.
Volunteer right.
RV and then probably came up the trail there on the, where the street ends.
But he was on the road. Yeah. It was on a, it was twenty to twenty-five mile an hour, so.
Oh, okay, so he was going like at least forty miles more than that.
Uh, so bicycles, the e-bikes still have to follow the, yeah, the route each of the road.
He was, he was like ten, so.
Oh, two years old.
Yeah, he was a kid and didn't know better, but, but I guess, yeah, um, should be brought up at least, you know.
I'm not sure we have anything you can do around this corner, but we can keep an eye out.
No. Can I ask a question? Are motor, motorized vehicles, quote, like allowed on the walking paths and the parks?
I don't believe, there's a sign down there. I'm not sure what it specifies. I think there's.
I ride, I'm very stressful and I ride on that hiking path every single day and it's, it's good.
You ride what?
Ride e-bike. There's no cars. No, there's no cars on, there's no cars on that.
You're, you're talking on the, the path?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I walk there every morning. I've never seen any bike there. But I didn't know they could be there.
I wake, I share all the time when I go by.
Actually, the RV park itself says no bicycles, but that's, they directed that people that are there, the kids running around. But an e-bike is following the laws of the road, going the right way, the correct way and then back around the park. And that's where I go.
The rules are concerned from the bathrooms down to the roadway. Because they like to get on there because that's a hill.
Yeah.
And ride, the police officer, I was a guy, little kid, about a month ago. Come fly down through there and he didn't see her.
In fact, I believe the RV park rules, if you read the RV park rules, tells him, it's, it says a bicycle. It was e-bike and a bicycle, something different. And it tells him to ride on the path. That you're not allowed to ride on the pavement, you have to ride on the path.
Is that posted?
It's, yeah, full of RV, River Creek RV park.
No, I mean, is there something posted that?
I don't.
I believe on the bulletin board, don't we have the rules posted? Yeah. Yep.
So it tells them you don't.
Yeah.
We don't want an RV running over them.
Right.
Don't want that candy room to be a big one, RV.
Sounds scary, yeah. Really crazy. That scared me.
Do you wanna do a motion?
Motion to set one of your legislative amendments to title the hand.
Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote nay? Motion carries. Resolution. Twenty-five fourteen, resolution authorizing a transfer within the general fund. Twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. From support services, personnel service, serve, support services, personnel services. Can you write word?
Yeah, it's a long.
Police Department. I think this has, uh, this has to do with last, so last, uh.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, resolution for S fourteen, resolution authorizing transfer within the general fund. Eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents from support services, personnel service, police department, but the line item.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I don't know, Leslie's not here. What happens coming down to twenty-eight four? I just stay in the. In equipment? Or how, how does that work? Because if it comes in through the twenty thousand four hundred?
So since it would be transferred, it would stay there. Um, and the reason she's doing this now, originally we were gonna wait to the end of the fiscal year and pull it from different places and make up that gap. She was told by the state, um, revenue person that we had to have the money allocated in order to make that purchase. So we're having to go ahead and complete both transfers.
And I thought that would be exact amount, but it's not been brought forward in that.
Yeah, but if it comes in on that.
I was asking.
Yeah.
If you get it to stay, it, it would stay in equipment.
It stays in equipment.
Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote nay? Alright, six point four. Point four. Can't post compensation. We can talk about this. Yeah. Yeah, well, the motion.
I made a motion to pay the current RV for a monthly stipend, the three hundred dollars for the additional park duties that would be done. Second now.
Uh, discussion. I, I did a little research and looked at three hundred dollars. It was pretty normal, I guess. Um, unless you guys saw something different, but maybe lose the range, but you know, area. I don't know if it is. I don't know. I think that's what you have to come up with, try to.
That's what I am.
Yeah. Well, it's gonna be easy money coming into winter time, isn't it? But it's gonna work through. Heck, um.
Oh, yeah?
You love the law of weed.
Yeah, that's when they rule.
Basically about to have a pile of leaf smoke.
That's true.
Yeah, I think she's that. I got them back.
And the restaurants are stated that they've never been.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sure as well.
I get it, sir. And emotionally, yes, if I, on a staff recommendation, I guess it's just a little, it just says request for three hundred dollar stipend from the current RV park, it's her.
No. It's because we're such a, we're, we're such a pleasure to work with.
Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote nay? Okay, aye. Vote nay, okay. Motion carries. Alright, run. City administrative reports.
So I've just been super busy dealing with FEMA stuff, all the FEMA reimbursement and that stuff, working with this, I've been coming down weekly and working with me, it's a torturous task dealing with those guys.
Yeah, they just kind of like, oh, improve everything that we've submitted and kind of checking to see if it was legit or something and stuff.
Basically, they wanna help you fill everything. And then, and then it goes to another per, another group of people in their association, then they come through and approve their history.
So it's actually been helpful with it.
So far, yeah, it's, and so it's like, we, we've worked with them, it's like, well, now the cost isn't worth, worth it now.
Yeah.
I know, like the Linderland project, they, I don't know if we're gonna get to claim that one. Basically, it comes down to they wanna fix what was broken. So we've lost roughly a twenty foot stick of pipe. So they wanna pay for that twenty stick, foot stick of pipe to be replaced back to the way it was. So I'm like, well, that's not worth it, cause we're wanting to move it to the back of properties and do a bunch of different stuff and and if we get them involved, then they gotta, they want all of the environmentalists to come and they wanna have a historical site study and frog studies and everything else to see where we're gonna disturb by moving it. And I'm, I don't know if that would be in our best interest to do.
How did the ten forty-one North and Royal, whatever it is, that's already been done, did accept that?
Yep, I had enough pictures and broken spots in that one, but they're gonna accept to repair two hundred and twenty feet of that one, I believe.
And we had three hundred foot.
I think it was closer to six hundred foot.
Closer to six hundred. So they're not gonna cover.
Not all of it, but we'll get like half, almost half. And then we got, um, they agreed to allowing us to lump the parks together, so that will barely make the four thousand dollars threshold. So just.
The Evergreen and Millsite.
Yeah, they let it do. And the Creekside and so, and let's lump all three parks together and call it park.
And that will qualify us for paying the money, because it's over the four thousand?
Yes, just, just barely. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then other than that, I think we're moving forward with the water plant project. We had three bid meetings today. They're getting to I think by the sixteenth, we'll have our first, some of the bids in, we'll have a, somebody elected to do the project.
So you're learning a lot from FEMA? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
How, how they work.
It's, it's way backwards from the way. I could tell you that.
Yeah, it's good experience.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for Zach?
Are you doing anything on the water tank? We got money from the federal, everyone. Jacob water. Is anybody working on that?
I don't know about water tank. And our last.
Cleaning the inside and coating it and stuff.
We did that just recent.
Yeah, I think we did that last fall.
So is that all that?
That's completed.
It's, it's gonna take care of it.
Yeah, I think that project's completed when we did the east tank, the south tank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at, the goal, of course.
That's the one over by the hind rays.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they did a bunch of work on that and they got a new epoxy liner on and you.
Okay.
Send, it's all, yeah, that's all done.
Okay.
Back in service.
Great.
Have we heard anything more on that? Unpayable loan that we have, we don't want to pay back.
The backwash system.
We're still moving forward with that project where, well, we've kind of put that project on hold because they don't pay for anything before we get the grant completely. So once we get the grant, then we'll start the engineering and I think we got two years to use that one.
And that's not a grant, that's a.
Forgivable loan.
Reforgivable loan. So the city just comes up with fifty thousand and sort of.
We come up with nothing.
Oh, really? And what was the fifty thousand version?
For some reason, there was, Lonnie even typed in there about, uh, we were gonna have a portion and when we talked to the lady, she said, no.
What was the project?
They are, um, gonna put automated backwash system. Uh, it'll be able to be automatically, whenever it deems that it, like, we could set it to where it flow, it gets to a certain flow, then it backwash itself or the operator can put his computer, push a button and it'll backwash automatically. Cause right now he has to go down there and open valves, turn on the compressor, shoot, and push the water down there. And we'll be able to just do it from, from the office.
Over a million dollars, wasn't it?
I don't, I don't know.
We're gonna be in full six different ways from Sunday. Have you had an opportunity to check the lighting on the, uh, sign after?
I have. I know, it seemed like, what was it, last winter? I think it went out or it got in, we went out, I think Michael went out and put it in the hole bin.
It's just so low, it reflects like poorly. Needs to be up.
I don't know.
Or do you think it was the angles on that, maybe it'd be changed or? I, I think we should put in LED, really.
It's all, it's all LED.
Uh, but yeah, I think they would kind of shoot like this instead of shooting at it.
Well, that's on that end of the bridge, that we have economic development money and where would, where, would we get money if we had to redo it? Could come out of that?
Um, I mean, developed it possibly because you drive people into town and it.
Maybe.
I mean, who would make money if the solar plants are down? What could be, it's the lighting, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll go out and figure out what light bulb it is and I'll see if just changing the light bulb, maybe that light bulb was just not our, not brightness. Cause it's already an LED bulb and then it's in like one of them halogen housings that's concreted into a rock.
Into the, into the block and then it's already a rock.
Yeah.
Maybe we just do a, do a light at every wire.
Maybe. Yeah, I, maybe I think all the power comes from above behind it. I wonder if we could put something different.
Backlight maybe.
Do something a little different.
Another question, uh, several months ago, I, well, the last two years I've been asking, I was asking Mr. Rainbow to take a look and he finally did, do a way with that crosswalk by the post office.
Yeah.
But there has not been another one put in. We talked about putting one in further down the street. Because right now there's one at, uh, one at first and one down by the doctor's office. Uh, we need another crosswalk there and crosswalks within the city are up to the city to, to this.
That's a weird one though, because there's a curve right there and I think, isn't that why we got rid of it? So. So either side of that corner is gonna be a blind corner for somebody.
We talked about moving it down closer to the doctor, about maybe half block. You will be having a crosswalk there, but there's no other crosswalk other than the end of two block there.
I think the problem with moving it down there would be it's, there's, there's no sidewalk that goes to the edge. They got that grass thing on the one edge and then on the other side, I wanna say they got grass and rocks.
Is there a way to put like a flashing light to slow things down there before they take that turn?
There, I, we could, I mean, I mean, those are.
It is dangerous.
And, yeah, that's, I think that's why by either going all the way down to, to Pine or in Jan.
And that's Laurel there.
Laurel, or, or First Street, then that takes, gets rid of.
Yeah, there, there is one, there is one Laurel, I think.
I don't, I'm not.
I'm not positive, but if not, that would be the logical place to put it.
And then there's no ADA corners there.
Yeah. Just something that, you know, you just very time.
Um, I was wondering, cause Lonnie mentioned, um, the money that we were saving on the electricity for the streetlights, he was gonna look into turning other streetlights on and there's people that would really enjoy having streetlights on Johnson, definitely it's too dark.
They down there on the bottom, on the other side of the bridge?
So I don't know which ones that he turned on or he's gonna turn them on or if there's any out there to turn on, that they would like additional streetlights on Johnson Street.
Well, several years ago, when they went through that, uh, I can't remember, did they remove all those streetlights that they turned off?
Yeah, I don't know.
Or did they leave them there and, uh?
Why didn't we turn on the streetlight? Cause it was expensive.
Yeah, it was a savings thing and there was actually a committee at one time headed up by, I mean, the script to save all the streetlights in town.
Yes, I remember that. And I wonder why they kept them on on the bridge, they were taking that town, the bridge is not city, so that's somebody else's, you know, keep it close.
Back to the county.
Yeah, so that was not applicable for what?
Right.
City was stupid.
Well, it's the ones on the. The ones on the bridge are weird, cause we serviced those ones.
Really? Well, you need to send somebody a bill.
Yeah.
But anyways, look into the streetlights and see if you can, if there are any out there that are getting back on.
I feel like Lonnie had started that, reaching out, calculating the savings and looking into that, so maybe we can find where he could.
There were all, only every other one was being turned on.
Right.
And I don't know if it's still that way or if they're gone and taken some completely out.
That's what I thought, I think they took a lot of them out.
They were taken out, they originally did that by fifteen plus twenty.
It's twenty years ago.
They took them all out.
When we just, that went on to our water.
Yes.
Luckily, we were paying three dollars extra to keep the streetlights on, fifty late, years later, when they asked about it, I've never heard of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I don't think that that was needed, but. But anyway, the, the LEDs are a lot brighter, so you don't need as many and they don't, uh, cost a fraction, but not so.
Have you lived and seen it on the pools there?
No, no.
I think there's some poles down there.
They took off all of the top stuff.
Yeah.
Well, they took it all of a sudden, they kept the whole, they took the streetlights themselves out.
Yeah, but I think they're just hanging them on power poles.
All right, anything else? All right, uh, mayor and councilor comments. Check the end bottom, I'm sorry. They have all the same.
I don't want to steal your thunder.
I almost, I almost went first, I, I.
Yeah, but he could have.
Well, the mayor and Diana and myself attended the, uh, League for the Cities Conference in Portland this, uh, last week. And it was actually very good, uh, even though it took some of us a little bit of time to get there.
Nobody.
But it was actually very good, the, the breakout sessions were good, I, I'll let Lou talk about the breakout sessions, he took a ton of notes. Um, along with all the posts that he took from Delta City. I just don't have more. But, uh, one thing that they had going on up there is, I don't know if you didn't know how those work, but there's always vendors there wanting to do things with the city, uh, cities and, you know, other things. And they have tables, a table display and they have all kinds of giveaways. You gotta go, uh, they, this time they did a passport, you put together a little passport, you had to go around and get ten, uh, vendors to sign off on it and then you could be entered to, into a drawing. Well, Diana went around and got ten signatures. And she said she wasn't gonna be able to, uh, stick around, she had to leave. So one of us could put, Lou, right, put our name on it, turn it in, I put my name on it, turn it in, well, we hope we got drawn for it. We got drawn for a fifty dollar gift card for our city, so. That. It's just, just whatever.
It's a gift card for the city.
For a gift card for the city, use it for whatever the city needs it for.
We can bring. The lights to the entrance of town, I was thinking donuts at the next council meeting.
There was, well, in Oregon, there is about two hundred and forty-one cities. We probably had, what'd they say, the number of, of representative, about a hundred and, or was seventy-eight or something like that?
I thought there was one hundred and seventy.
It might have been over a hundred. And so you figure five, four, five hundred people there, or six hundred, we were one of five that got drawn, so.
Good legwork.
Um, the only thing I have is that Merle Creek's participation with the Challenge of Heroes, they came in with Rochelle's match, had the top. Person, and he raised. You know, it opens.
So cool.
Merle Creek raised six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars, coming in almost seven hundred dollars over Winston.
That one restaurant in Winston is the one that always wins, right?
Yeah. So Winston PD was a little long, just wanted to take another.
Do we have the trucks or?
We had front slingers, um, the pizza buzz, Thunder's truck and the lemon ring that were down there and then Merle Creek Fire, Merle Creek Police, Riddle Fire, Incanibal Fire team to serve. And then Rochelle left, the donations, um.
Our city files there?
Train to fire did not show up, they were invited, we thought they were coming, but they did not make it. For whatever reason that night. Um, but it was a great turnout, lots of people, they did competitions, whether it was official competition, um, they did races. It was a lot of fun to participate in and watch and had a very steady crowd of people trying to be. And then each of the food trucks did a, they're reaching along with, but.
Where did they park food trucks at? We use our.
Yeah.
Expendence.
Yeah.
I'm sure like we'll use that more.
Yeah, I, I would like to see us do events to just bring attention to the fact that that spot.
Yeah.
Fire trucks out on the road on both sides, and put banners on them that said Challenge of the Heroes. And should come down early during the day and put signs in front of the Els Lodge and the Ladrerie, the little, the, and the site cards I attached to them.
We thought about using the, uh, least parts to round everybody into the bar.
I think double what they made last year.
Yeah, that was double, that's whole. I think his last year was thirty-two, yeah, thirty-two.
Thank you, Angie.
She even tripled one of, she said she was gonna triple the top one to the top. There was kind of a little battle between Incanibal and Riddle, but they ended up tying it eight hun, eight hundred and one apiece.
Oh, wow.
Got this.
Yeah, uh, well, we are ready, we have a couple of things, uh, I'll start out with our, um, Willington Ward, which is absolutely a lifesaver for me, cause I forget everything. So you'll see me a lot of times standing in front already. And so it's been, it's been a huge success, I, I feel, and probably helped with, um, the event. Um, yeah, that, and so bright and what we need for coming into the, you know, we just need that kind of light for coming into the city. Uh, but yeah, I loved it, um, I had thought about the Willington Ward uh, in the last, you know, couple of years, but I was thinking just a little stick-on thing, but this is like far beyond what I had imagined and it's just awesome, uh, it really connects the community, I think, so. With that, um, I was thinking, um, I always end up, like I said, finding out things, uh, later and so I got to the event late and there are people, it was getting dark and people obviously were starting to go home, but I always think I had wanted to do this last year, mention it, and that is to dovetail onto that event or just specifically Merle Creek's, uh, police and fire for more than just a day. Um, like maybe a couple of days, cause it's right, it's in a week.
So that Challenge of the Heroes is not a city event?
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying, if we could make.
You could do separate one?
Kind of piggyback, just, just for our personal to raise more money and to have the community support, uh, our more, uh, just another opportunity, um, to kind of, uh, you know, so that the police and the fire, um, are recognized for the tremendous contribution that they do. And before, before the Willington Ward, um, you know, it, it didn't seem like there was enough, you know, maybe because of all the results of what you know, we were talking about, that maybe this is not something you guys would be interested in, but I just thought, man, this is a great way to get more people in the community to focus on the fantastic job that, um, that our police and fire, but, so if you guys want to think about that a little more, that's.
Well, so are you thinking that, uh, you still be raising the funds for the same?
No, no, have their funds be created for the young people that you know, have been having it. And then the following day have our funds that are raised just for our police and fire.
Cause the funds that are raised don't go to the departments? They, they go to, they go to an organization?
No, I, I understand that, but if they were just under the umbrella of Merle Creek, then those funds would go less, right?
I think it would be better to do it at a separate time if you're going to do a fundraiser like that and then.
Several months later.
Yeah.
If I need that, we need to use the, that facility down there that we put, I need to build, I think we we need to try to use.
Yeah, and we could, uh, when it's, uh, well, I guess in the fall is when it normally happens, maybe we could do one in the spring. Uh, but anyway, just, just an idea, um. Also, I wanted to, as I said, that I'm really impressed with what I'm seeing going on, um, it's been a fantastic job, but with that in mind, I still am interested to find out from Joanna, if there's been any fights for the.
We have, have to double check if it's four, I believe it's three that have come in. Um, of those three, I need to update the LOC website to say that we need to have our employment application. Um, because that's one of the things that we require with any application and two of them didn't turn that employment application in. So as soon as we got the resume, I just responded, thank you for submitting. And I attached the application and said, can you complete this and turn that in with this and, um, neither of those gentlemen returned the application. And then we have one gal who has submitted the application resume and, um, reference letter.
Did I address the speed thing on the? And I got here. Oh, I did take a look at the survey for, um, Mount Merle Creek, I didn't see anything really outstanding on that, um, just mainly that people weren't interested, I think, in some sort of restaurant, um, where people can own. Uh, I think we did, was there also, but, um, I was mainly some sort of, um, food establishment that, um, wouldn't be, uh, would be more of a, um, hi- higher end, I think that was appealing, I thought. Uh, but anyway, um, so what, what that's for? So, yeah, that's it.
So talking about those people, I got all these brochures and stuff for the city administrator whenever they're ready, cause that's why I realized a lot of it, we need somebody to give this stuff to. Um, one of the things, and you mentioned that you could write grants, that one of the things is trying to get some besides bark mulch underneath the playground. I told Bonnie and he, cause my husband hated the bark mulch and he said, my husband should quit playing in there. It's, but you know, we could get some kind of the, um, recycled tires, that kind of thing, because it's great to have a playground that's covered. That's super cool, but the bark mulch is really, um.
It's horrible.
Messy and grating, even though it's, you know, stickers, it's still, it's, um, it'd be a lot better if you do that, so I thought if she could write a grant, because it is a lot more spending than bark mulch, but it's still, it just makes it a lot nicer.
Did you talk to them?
Which one? Yeah, that's, I, about one of those, yeah. And that's, she said it is expensive, but you'll really like that if we can get that going for your donors.
Have you ever seen the cost there between, not the wood chips we have in them now and the plastic wood chips, what's the price, it's probably tremendous, did you give them?
I don't know, I don't know, but, uh, I just bought the.
I want that foam that all the new parks.
Yeah.
I know, like, right now, that park, Millsite, is, we got a grant to do a planning grant on that. To, I don't know, I feel like it's step one to the next grant, to get money to do an upgrade, we gotta put together a, a project. And then they gotta approve it and then I think it slides into the next step of getting money. Basically, we're.
We're going to venture in there, that, that's just that, that, that's quite possible too.
Financing.
Well, no, they do, they come in, they'll do the planning process and, and and, uh, the design process and everything, and that, I hope you have that, uh, brochures, I was talking to, well, I passed.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I got, uh, there's the old recreation, Kate Bradson's, relations. Nobody designs that inspire play. And you were supposed to talk to the mattress recycling.
If I have their card, I'm gonna call them. Or I give it to Zach and that's a call.
Yeah, so I was wondering.
Yeah.
If you're ready for this?
Sure.
Cause there's, uh, financing, you know, there's organizations that'll finance and League of Cities, they're ready to help with that. All kinds of different.
Mattress recycling, what you're talking about, there's one vendor, well, actually two events. And I was thinking of our cleanup day that we, that we do, they will bring the stuff in at no charge to the city, they will collect mattresses, at no charge to the city, works in the red vent and they'll take them away, so I think it's a win-win.
Yeah.
But there's always, there's always small fine print that we have to look at, so. So I'll, I'll give you the card.
Right, so.
I'll give you their cards.
Option, I don't think you can take it without that.
You can take, you can only. You can only take them to Roseburg.
And it's like thirty-two apiece.
Yeah, just, yeah, but these people will like tear it apart and actually sell. Yeah, they, they totally, yeah, they do different things.
Yeah, it's the document, the G, the scroll that is.
We, we're also, another one there, you, when you said what you did, you sparked, I remembered there, uh, there's a possibility of another revenue stream out there that I want to talk to you about and, uh, it it's has to do with the billboards. But I don't know if we can put it on, uh, on the airport property, their, their footprint is about, uh, six hundred and fifty square feet. And the guy told me being on I five like we are and he says, he's seen him, uh, bringing his, uh, over six figures. Uh, you know, and, and, you know, if we're making a hundred, two hundred bucks a month, it's more than two hundred bucks we have now. You know, and no cost to us, if it's just a, a piece of, of the land there, but I have his card as well.
What's this?
What was the cost? Yeah.
Well, what?
Well, they put it in, or do we have to put it in? No, they put it in, put it in, they put it in, they rent, they rent space on you and the revenue is generated. But I get, it's all based on sales calls and all that stuff, of course. But I get, it's all based on sales calls and all that stuff, of course, and views and all that. They do surveys, uh, through that, they survey that, say, hey, where's the CR at? When it's on a bill, you know, so okay, that drives that in.
Yeah, billboard right here in front of the airport already?
Uh, there's two of them. There's, uh, uh, two seven feathers ones right there, uh, but they're not on, uh, city property. I mean, one's on TR property. And the other might be on Calvary. Yeah, or they both might be Calvary properties.
There's one of those, for those signs that they put up, like what your speed is when you're going by, that's for the story. The one on Riverside where it's thirty miles an hour, but everybody kind of thinks it's thirty-five and the cop sits behind that brick.
Yeah, I think John just got, just got a set of them.
Oh, he did? Good, because I know that there's a lot of other cities and it just, you know, brings it to your mind that, you know, checking, okay.
Yeah, I've been, he's been having me drill around and drill holes in our ground signpost so he can mount it. You know, we got, we can be out here on Division and he's out there. I know I've seen him on Riverside a couple of times and he had him on North Myrtle.
On Springbrook.
Yeah, on Springbrook, they're up there. I think he had him set up down on Lower Division. He put them things all over.
You have to be down before I, couldn't be out there. So that's the, you know, steel.
Has there, is there any kind of movement, U-tran? And then we offer bus service. I read the article that said you're hoping it's temporary. Anybody know what's going on with that?
Yeah, I would, I would like to figure that out. We were talking with Canyonville. And they were telling us how, because this, that bus used to go over, they were telling us, they didn't think it was necessary. They didn't, they didn't have any money.
Really?
That was using it. And so I was like, wonder if we could at least maybe convince by at least kind of broke.
Because everybody has that money coming out of their payroll checks to pay for that, and for us to just all of a sudden be without it. They, they should put, take it with money, not with these checks.
Yeah, that's a good, I know there were several people in Myrtle Creek, but I knew that you said every single day they get to work and I don't, you know, it's it's a loss to lose it, but the article said it, they're hoping it's only temporary. They're gonna get the yellow line back on, but I don't know.
The squeaky wheel gets grease, so you know what we.
I'll, um, I mean, different people, I'll make it all.
Yeah, that's what you need to do. You know, let it know. And it, it's enforced service and we'd like to have it back for some refund or. Definitely need it.
We still, there's people driving that, yeah, that's Western's version. Yeah, it's, it's on the yellow lines.
It's a different route.
I'll try to explain, um, it was really good meeting, LOC meeting, um, I actually, a couple of things I, this is where you guys had me about too, I know I'm talking, we were talking about Bob, but I sat with a couple of, um, administrators the first day. And they sparked my interest and brought to Leslie, um, doing a bi-annual budget, seven annual budget. And I just wanted to get information on figuring out what that looked like. They were really, they praised it, uh, quite a bit, um, so you know, you'd be doing it by the end of the year or several year. Uh, I thought it was really interesting. So I just wanted to get more information. Maybe we can talk about that as something that it seemed interesting, um. That way we're looking like, you know, we get to the budget and do the game kind of thing. This way we have, we can have every other year we can go, cut something else, you know? I thought that was really interesting. Um, they, two of the sessions that I went to was one, one was really good about like the counselor versus, um, employee, uh, relationship and just, um, one of the big sentences, they said that counselors and employees, counselors are just allowed to be an employee, um, that comes to, um, their personnel file and things like that. We just try to make sure that we, that we're not, that's our review. We don't have that information. So if you hear like rumors that you're not allowed to be asking questions about the employees, so that's, you just gotta make sure. Like that was really, that was a really big thing. Um, I do, um, they like, I, you know, saying I was so bored, I think we can talk about this. Uh, some kind of wishful idea, because I think the reason why we talked about this because of, you know, what happened, you know, already with, you know, um, lots of administrators. So I think set something up so that, um, so kind of, we can talk about what that, like in a box for an employee can put something in that only I maybe pop to as the president have access to, not the administrator, uh, we can set something up like that. And then we can address things that, if they're in HR.
Yeah, well, we need, it'd be important for the local council to discuss it.
Possibly, yeah, possibly depending.
There just needs to be some.
Anyway, because one of the, one of the biggest things is if it has to do with an employee, something is, um, important, uh, they were very clear on like if something, like an employee would come to me about something that was harassment or something like that, I'm not probably telling you guys anything. I'm more this, they have a little lawyer. Um, that's a, it's a lawyer relationship and I have to bring employees there. So there's a lot of things that you guys want to just know with the company employees and so, and I think they're very interested. I'm not here to be able to that. I could just, I think of the council, I know, me too, I'm just saying like us group, we're, we have that bubble, we're. Yeah, and so, I thought that was really, just good information back here. Um, there's been, and we had, another session was, um, it's funny how it came up, um, with their, we have, we have one, I haven't really spoke to what we're dealing with is, um, evaluating city administrators, the one session. And so I said, I was really good, um, I think one of the things I liked about it is, um, they call it a thirty, three hundred and sixty evaluation. So they will evaluate from top and bottom, um, they kind of emphasize definitely the, the reports, any level of that. Sometimes it doesn't make sense. So like, but it's having that, um, evaluation for both sides, I think is important. I like the idea of maybe trying to make it electronic. I know I'm not, but it's all paper, uh, a lot of times electronic, make that electronic. But also, um, adding that to the evaluation to all of, all of the managers. So like all their direct reports and then their managers are all, um, that's, that's possible with the city, I think it'd be really useful.
Managers, some of the department heads.
Yeah, department heads, so, so like, um, so your department head would get any evaluation from Bonnie or not, from the administrator, but also from his, um, people who've got the employee in that thing. So they gotta be really useful, um, uh, for them, um.
The other thing I thought, uh, that one was good was they, what they said was, uh, don't use numbers and use numbers only in your evaluation.
One through five, I thought you.
Yeah, one through five, one through five. Make sure everything has comments, but then he goes, yeah, he could, there could be a one, there could be a five, get this in the middle, uh, make sure it has comments, but this. And, and make sure those comments are all together and I know that we've done it in the past and still, on the other side of things, they said not to use.
Thank you for the survey, we're employees survey like the administration. So the bottom people say like, we have good communication. We understand what's going on in the city and what our roles are.
Not in the past.
And that's what they just talked about. But I think the surveys pass, they probably understand what you're asking to do, um, that as well. It's kind of outside of the evaluation process, where they just do like this basic.
Just to sort of. Better make your.
Yeah.
Some things that they need to work on with the, and the personnel, um, we need to do a better job of communicating our projects, our things, our activity, our budget.
Basically a city's needs assessment or, or yeah, and almost what, what you see that we are in need of at the city or what you see, you know, from an employee's end as well.
And those kind of things is, this speaks to evaluation. Um, they were very clear that to, that they should not be anonymous, because of.
Right.
But, um, when it comes to a survey, you can maybe make an anonymous survey just for, you know, the employees to do like maybe every six months, kind of like, you can kind of track it. And we've asked this question over the last, you know, couple of years, how, how it's trending, how do you, you know, that has, um, I think that would be really useful. Um, that could be anonymous, uh, and that, but like, when you're evaluating, they were very clear, like, don't, they can't be anonymous, because they have to be able to go back and be honest, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, kind of like things that are. We can, don't do it.
Yeah. So I think that would be useful. And then, um, one thing that was wording that they, uh, just made be clear on, like, for example, our new administrator, his contract, um, that it says, or sorry, um, annual evaluation is not exclusive. I think typically that, you know, I think it says that annual evaluation. But just make sure, because I think somebody brought up, in fact, like, what if like halfway through of the year, there's something that, that needs to be addressed, like, you know, we, we need to be on risk at that point, not wait for the evaluation, some of that, so. Um, it's just making sure that they understand that they can be evaluated halfway through.
There's something that needs addressing.
Yeah, yeah, I think, so that's what we, yeah, that's something that. We did, one of the things I, um, um, with, one of the vendors was a, um, um, and there she was last year too, um, she does like skate parks and things like that, and you just see her, I talked with her. Um, I thought that was good. I asked her to, because ours is like twenty-something plus years old and I was like thinking like, if we really did a good, I know it gets used and so maybe it's still in good condition, but it'd be better to get evaluated, kind of make sure that you think that, you know, do we want to start setting up inside, you know, to do the cost, kind of keep it going. And she also uh, was talking about different opportunities. We had a little grass area next to it, um, and she maybe put something else in there where like maybe younger kids can still come over and do different things.
A little kid's section would be so nice with the, a little kid's section, like with the little hills.
There was like a, um, kind of a pad, something pad.
There was a turn that they used.
Splash pad.
No, what's that got with gravel mound or something?
No, it was splash pads and nothing was.
Well, maybe not.
Well, they're trying to do a splash pad. That's what they have at the art center in Roseburg in Summerlin. Um, they didn't have one in Lake House, we.
They were like fairly inexpensive op, you know, options for like, for younger kids and this stuff. And overall ages, overall ages type thing. So anyway, that was really interesting.
We're running out of room up there.
Yeah, I know.
And anybody wants?
I, I think. Well, one idea, I, one idea, I, I'm not sure if this is an option or not, but, um, I like the idea of having a dog park, but could it be maybe moved? We could utilize that space differently.
Somebody proposed expanding the dog park in that space you're talking about.
It's, it's a really small dog park, to have seen a bigger dog park down where the disco opens, but you know, because that's beautiful down there, but, you know, that's just kind of.
I mean, I know, yeah, I want. Because, if we, yeah, uh, the, the.
Why couldn't you, why couldn't you put it, uh, down in the corners of, of Creekside, Creekside is huge, you know?
I mean, you're not in my sense place to go and pay the dog.
I think there's plenty of room in soccer there. I've seen some, of course.
Anyway, it's just things that we can look into that, I'm not saying. Um, well, uh, last couple of days, um, have we figured out who's manning the visitor center? A new center?
I talked with the library and asked if they could somehow do a rotation with people that they already have on their volunteer list. Because I volunteered at the library and I thought that would be a great change of scenery.
Actually, I had talked with Susan and I put it together, I mean, it's Urban Shane and, uh, and Jason Mann to go over that, said some, what are, what we want to do, we want three days a week, we want two days a week, you know, what, what's our open hour going to be and how are we going, uh, and I'm not going to give you the word, man, how are we going to stack? So, so we're working on that. I, I, uh, I just took it upon myself. To, uh, address that or something, I'm hoping to get together with, uh, and get that evidence in the next week. Because we want to open again, we want to open now. Shouldn't have opened first this summer.
That we need to start letting people know what we have.
Right.
And once we establish, uh, uh, whoever that ends up being, whoever's kind of managing that. I'd like them to kind of help manage the bulletin board at the post office, because it's public. I mean, I said have that, but people can put it whatever they want, but I mean, I said we can be communicating on that as well.
I don't think that the live, the, the, um, post office staff really care what happens there. When I'm in line, I pull outdated things, but there's some signs up there for puppies that are probably pretty old now.
That bulletin board that the first got put up, they wouldn't allow anything on that that was, uh, uh, retail or anything like that. It had to be on nonprofit. And then, and they wouldn't allow business cards and everything. You put something on there, it got pulled out and thrown in the trash. But the last two postal passengers have been a bit more lax about that. And now it was like thirty-two thousand. Anyway, it just says.
Uh, I just wanted to mention anybody that remembers Sebastian. He's at the new pool and like I said, I just wanted to see him, anybody who passed kids, but he taught how to swim.
Sebastian or Josh or Sebastian is there?
I wanted to comment on your survey idea. I think that's an excellent idea. I was wondering, would Zach be the one to write the questions out or how would that? Ask?
Um, not necessarily, no, I don't.
Chat G P T.
I do think that's.
That was right. All right, anything else? All right, I'm turning six thirty-six.